All right, call to order the October 19th, 2020 town A New Windsor work session. We are recording through Zoom and we are meeting through Zoom and we have all five council members present. Approval of the September 21st, 2020 work session meeting minutes, they were just emailed out again today by Donna. And also last week, I believe it was. Do you hear a motion for approval?
Don't move.
In a second.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilman Paul's Grove, second by Councilman Green to approve the minutes from the 20 September 21st, 2020 work session. All those in favor, raise your hand. All five council members have raised their hands, so move. Fiscal year 2020 town audit report. Mike, welcome to the town of New Windsor via Zoom. Before we get started, Mike, on behalf of the entire council, we know Donna puts in a lot of time, a lot of effort. Getting a lot of information to the auditors and even though she's got the experience and it's on a probably normal process tour, it can be a little nerve wracking sometimes getting that information out and finding things and getting the answers and but Donna is very competent and does a great job. So thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Donna, anything you'd like to say before Mike takes over?
Just that I thought things went very well considering that we had to make some adjustments this year because of the COVID situation. It's always a pleasure to work with Mike and his staff. They're, they're great to work with and the nice part is that I, that we have the same team that comes each year. So they're familiar with our procedures and how we do things and don't have to learn it from, from the start again. We did have a new member of the team, but she, she jumped right in and seemed very comfortable. So I thought everything went pretty smoothly. Thank you.
Right, yeah, having the same team every year is a big plus. Mike, floor is yours.
Alrighty, thank you. So I do want to thank Gary and Donna for all their help and getting the audit done. You know, as the mayor mentioned and Donna, you know, it's a new processes this year with COVID and everything, but you know, I thought the audit did go really smoothly this year. I agree with Donna. So that's a test to Gary and Donna and all the work their staff have put in. So we did have no difficulties in performing the audit this year. We had no disagreements with management over any accounting or auditing matters. We did have some material journal entries that we will be proposing, but that's mostly due to the new debt issue, basically getting that recorded on the books. And I see we're scrolling through the financial statements. So the page we're on right now is basically our opinion. So this is, you know, in essence, what you pay us for. So we should unmodified opinion on the town's financial statements for this year. And you'll see at the top of the page here, the town did have to adopt one new statement this year. That was Gatsby 95 was the postponement of the effective dates of certain authoritative guidance. This is basically Gatsby's way to provide relief to state and local governments. So it basically delayed the implementation of all new standards, one year, one, one to two years, depending on the standard. So your financial statements will be the same as and comparable to prior years. So if we could scroll down to page 10. Now, just basically to go over some brief financial highlights. So this is your statement of net position. So this is basically, hey, where is the town at at June 30th, 2020? And if you look at the bottom of the page here, you'll see your net position. There's two categories, your net investment in capital assets and your unrestricted net position. I wanted to point out your unrestricted net position, that's basically what's left after all your assets minus your liabilities. You basically have 980,000 in the general fund or your governmental activities as of June 30th, 2020. And on their business type activities, which is your water and sewer fund, you had 1.8 million as of June 30th left over to fund future expenditures of that fund. So they're pretty healthy balances. And if you go down to the second page, which is page 11, this is your statement of activities. So this is what happened during the year, you know, do we have a good year or a bad year? And if you look at the bottom of the page there, your change in net position for your governmental activities is 917,550 dollars. Positive increase this year. That was primarily driven by your capital projects you had this year from your expenses on the Blue Ridge project and also your additional renovations to the High Street building drove the increase for the general fund or your governmental activities. For your business type activities, you had a $488,000 increase in that position. And what primarily drove that is you can see up top there on their business type activities, you had a $250,000 grant or part of the loan was forgiven for the
Water tank.
Yes, the water tank refurb, refurbished loan, yes. So that's really what drove that increase in your business type activities. And if you keep going, the next page, this is page 12, you know, this is your general fund. So it just really has your investments, your cash, your accounts payable doesn't include your debt or your capital assets. You had a fund balance of 980,465 unassigned. And then I think for the year ended, the general fund, I think, which is on the next, it's on page 14, I believe. You'll see the general fund had an increase of 407,000 for the year on the, on the modified or current financial resource focus. So basically you had positive increases in your net position for both funds for the year into June 30th, 2020. As far as your notes to your financial statements, I think the, the biggest note, I mean, there's a wealth of information in there, but I think, you know, note six, if you have, I'm not going to walk you through it, but that basically lists your debt and your debt issues. It tells your future principal and interest payments. It's always something, something to look at for the town. That's all I really had at this point in time, unless there's any questions from the council or the mayor.
Any questions from the council? None from me. I looked it over. Things looked pretty good. Some of that revenue, of course, was from our development, water and sewer hookups, which we had anticipated. Anybody want to see anything in here?
Mayor, will you be emailing or somebody can email this out to us?
You don't have it?
I'll have to check.
Donna, you sent this out to everybody, didn't you?
Gary sent it out, I believe, Thursday or Friday, Gary? Is that right?
Yes, I believe I sent it out to mayor and council the day Mike sent it over, I believe it was Thursday last week, Thursday or Friday last week.
Did everybody else get it?
I think I did.
Yep.
Kim said she did.
Everybody else? Yes? Not sure?
I'm double checking now, but I don't see it, but I'll double check.
Gary, can you check your email?
Uh, yeah, hang on.
Well, I say I got it, but I thought I saw an email about it, but I deleted it because that kind of stuff makes my eyes cross. So I figured I'd just wait until we are the in person, but I saw an email about it. Maybe it wasn't attached. Maybe it was just Donna telling us we were going to go over it.
I do not see it in mine either. I'm looking now.
Yes, I sent it out Thursday, the 15th at 8:56 AM. It was the work session agenda along with the draft that, that Mike, Mike provided. It was the same day that Mike sent it. I can, I can resend it, but I have the email where I sent it out to mayor and council on the
Found it. I found it. I did receive it.
Okay. So Donna, we need to approve this tonight, correct?
We do. Terry, I just sent it to you. And who else didn't have it? Dave?
Well, if Gary said he sent it, then I'll have it. I did get the agenda, so if it was included, I'll have it. I just can't check because I'm on the same device.
I actually did find mine. I, I do have it.
What I discovered happens is when people respond or reply to that, it gets buried at the top of that thread. That's where I found it here.
All right. So anyway, I just resend it to Dave and Terry.
So if anybody has any questions for, for Mike or Donna and Gary, also thank you for your help with the audit.
You're welcome. Donna does all the work.
Not true.
And Mike and his team, I, I do my short share, but or anything they need, but they do all the work.
Do I hear a motion to introduce fiscal year 2020 town audit report?
Are we introducing or
We're approving it, approving it, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Paul's Grove to approve fiscal year 2020 town audit report. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, second by raise your hand. All five council members have raised their hands, so approve. Thank you. Thank you, Mike, Donna and Gary again.
Thanks, Mike.
All right. Thank you for the time.
Mike, if you want to stay around for an exciting work session, more welcome.
I put, I put you first, Mike, so you got an easy
I appreciate that, Gary.
If you got a keg of nails you'd rather open up, go ahead.
Well, everyone have a good night and enjoy the rest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Social media policy. Find that again. Michelle, you'd like to take over?
Just a little bit. After our last meeting, I made some of the changes we discussed trying to clarify. For example, Gary's concern about comments being relevant and things like that. I did send out to you all alternate language about businesses. And I heard back from a couple of you that thought that that was, that solved the problem that we had been concerned about. So you will notice that that's, I, I keep trying to move it like I'm in charge of this thing.
Where you want me to go down it? Right here?
So yeah, well, that is actually, I think we put it in visitors guidelines. You, I also moved guidelines for visitors to the second section. Cause I'm thinking visitors don't really care about what the employees or the electeds are supposed to do. But they might care about what they're supposed to do. So I put it closer to the front in the hopes that someone will read it. The prohibitions are the same on the guidelines for visitors, but that's where we, we took out economics and put in there number three about businesses. So I made it pretty vague. But I wanted to make sure that you had the right to take stuff off at your discretion. So that's what it says. Otherwise than that, there's not really a lot of substantive changes other than a little tweaking from what we saw last time. You will notice that I don't do anything about that page group dispute. I don't think it goes in here anyway, and I don't understand it.
How about, how about the, the one where it prohibited talking about elections?
Oh, I changed that up a little bit, I think. Go, go, go back like a minute, up, just up a little bit more there. Wait, 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 wait. This was for employees. No, I just said that they couldn't put regarding municipal elections in the town. That would not limit an employee from talking about the presidential election, but would limit him. Remember, we talked about the bozo ticket from complaining about the bozo ticket. But I didn't, my notes didn't really land on anything other than we had talked about that, but I wasn't, I don't, I don't, I mean, I'm more than happy to change it again. I'm just not sure how I would.
I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, here it says the following poster comments are expressly prohibited. But I mean, if we post on there that the election is
Oh, I see.
Second.
Go, go back up. Can you go back up? Cause I can't, wait a minute, I've got it here in paper because I know how to work paper. That's in the guidelines for employees. And I don't think that it would, that if the administrator posted something that says the election is May 4th or whatever the election ultimately is, I don't think that would apply even because of where it is in the section.
Okay.
And if the administ, well, now theoretically, the administrator is not an employee. So I suppose theoretically they could put on defamatory and bad stuff, but that would probably be unlikely.
Well, technically our council members, because we are paid by the town.
You're not employees.
No.
No, you don't want to be and the town doesn't want you to be.
Okay.
For all kinds of reasons, not the least of which the IRS.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Could you scroll to the first page again, Neil? Because I thought I printed this off to look at while we were talking, but I seem to have the wrong version. Just go down to the bottom of that under definitions. Okay, this is just like a little tweak, Michelle.
Okay.
To where it says post, where we have defined the word post.
Okay.
Blog is actually, it used to be an acronym for a weblog. So it's not really the right word. I would just say something like information submitted.
Okay.
Something like that. Yeah, just change it to that.
All right.
The only other thing that getting, getting back to the political. I just don't, I just, you know, like if I, if I created a page that said Kim Schultz for town council and that was my Facebook page and then I start posting. You know, whatever, I don't know, something that has nothing to do with that, but the name of my page is that I'm running for election. Is there any way to deal with something like that?
I think that's under the guidelines for elected officials.
Yeah, but what if I'm not elected? What if I'm somebody running that I'm not already on the town council or I'm not, or I'm not already the mayor or I'm not already
You mean visitors?
Yeah, no, no, well, I guess you would be a visitor, but you would be in a somewhat separate category of declared candidate.
Okay, so that's close enough.
No, it's, it's still, it's still a good question. And maybe whatever we do, we would need to put in the visitors because that's what you would be. Right. Somebody who's just declared candidate.
Well, can't we use the same verbiage that we have down here for employees? Right there.
You see, they're not, you wouldn't, you would be using your own, you wouldn't be using the towns. And these prohibitions are on. Get back to the page.
Well, how about just regarding elections?
Well, you want to make sure it's just municipal elections.
Yeah.
But I think your question is one we hadn't really talked much about. Of bozo, bozo one who's running for office. But he couldn't post or she, Bozette, I don't know, couldn't post on the town site anyway. Or I guess you could if you're taking comments.
Yeah, you can still comment. Like what if we say, you know, music on the main is, you know, whatever date 2021 and Bozette running for town council posts. You know, that's great. I hope to meet all the residents.
All the candidates, yeah.
Yeah, you know, something like, you know, everybody who lives here, whatever. But people do that all the time. They set up their own, like they have a personal page and then they set up a political page.
A campaign page, yeah. Give me, give me between now and the council meeting to, to tweak that out and see if I can come up with some language.
Sounds good.
And we'll send it around like I did with the, with the businesses. So we know, cause yeah, that really outsiders running hadn't, hadn't really come up.
So I actually just saw it on another, on another government page where somebody did that.
Okay.
All right. Well, that's one more thing to try and get right.
Anyone else? All right.
Wait, so I had, I had one thing, I'm sorry. On the new language that Michelle put in number three under visitors. Again, it talks about businesses may benefit from posting on the town's website.
Yeah, that was me. I think I didn't catch that after you told me about it.
Okay, so that should, that
So that should read social media pages.
Social media site.
Site.
Okay, and then, and then my question.
That to my attention and I missed that.
That's okay. That's okay. My, my question, although maybe it's not in the weeds, for, for those that are the administrators. Since there's no real guide to what you deem as limited posts, it's up to your sole discretion. I, I, I'm just, I'm just wondering how you make that decision that you're going to, going to let someone post about their business and possibly remove someone else's post about their business. Are we setting ourselves up for some business having some complaints? You know, and I'm, I'm thinking the couple of businesses we have around town, if someone was posting on our social media site about their lunch special, would that be okay? But how about if someone was posting about their drink special? Would we, would, would you be okay with that? And I mean, how do you make those decisions as the administrator? And maybe it's not a big deal, but just curious.
Usually Kim and I will go back and forth on, before a deletion, unless it's something really very, I mean, very definite that it ought to come off. However, my take is if they have some relationship with the town and that's open for interpretation, of course, as well. You know, then it, it stays. You know, I discussed this a little bit. I don't know if you made the, you weren't at the town council meeting, right? But I'll give you an example of like flood zone. They are in Union Bridge, but they had a fundraiser that benefited New Windsor and Union Bridge Fire Department. So, you know, something like that I'm okay with. I don't know if you will ever get perfect guidelines on deletions, but usually Kim and I between us. Hopefully people have trust in us that we, we come up with the right decisions.
And honestly, the only, the only things business wise that I can even ever remember either one of us deleting are businesses that have absolutely nothing to do with New Windsor. They're not in New Windsor, they're not near New Windsor. You know, it's, people find out about these pages and this is another reason, in my opinion, for going to a page, but that's another conversation. But you know, somebody finds out, oh, New Windsor has a page. Let me advertise my Montgomery County, yeah, you know, carpet cleaning service or something like that. Well, that's not, you know, that's not the point. So I mean, I don't can't think of any time where a New Windsor business put something out there or sent us something that we said no. You know, I can't think of an example that we would say no to, so.
Okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
And I think that Frankie's has specials a lot advertised. And some of them are food and some of them are, you know, three dollar pitchers or that dates me. I have no idea what a pitcher beer costs anymore. But I think so long as it's sort of in, in the realm of the general activities of your town, and you've got towns with liquor license or restaurants with liquor license, perfectly legal operations. Now you, you do need to keep track and keep what you delete. So in the event that there was somebody who got miffed and wanted to know what you deleted, you would be able to show that you deleted the Montgomery County Carpet Cleaner and the guy from Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, who, you know, wants to walk your dog, but all of the locals don't have that. So you can show a pattern that is not improper.
And, and I, yeah, I think, I mean, I, I keep a record of that, but you know, again, this is another reason to have a page because you wouldn't have that problem if it was a page. I mean, you have to keep comment of comments, but comments are a lot easier to track than, because when you, when somebody posts something, you have to take a screenshot of it. And you have to save the image and, you know, a comment, you just, it's just text, you know, you just copy and paste it into a, into a document. But you know, it's just, it's just something everybody to think about as we move forward in that conversation. But yeah, I, I have to do that for my work page. I have to keep a record if I delete comments. So.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, no, I know, you know. But
A little tweaking for the council meeting.
Yeah.
All right.
And maybe by the council meeting, you all can figure out if you want a page or a group or between now and then if somebody invents something new.
Let's hope not.
I, I don't even, I don't know what's there, so I can't even imagine what's new. All right, I'll make those changes and shoot it back out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary, big news, 2020 road paving update. Oh, unmute.
So I wanted you to make sure that you see Parker's nice and comfortable on the sofa behind me. Yeah. So for the 2020 road paving update, CPE mobilized this, early this morning. And the schedule for the week is as follows. Today they started on seg, segment seven, which is mill drive. And they're going to mill and base pave that. They got started a little late start on the, the piece of equipment that they used to mill, the milling machine itself, the, the flut, low boy that was hauling it out of Baltimore broke down. So it didn't get here as early as they expected, but, but anyway, they, they made good progress. Once they got here, got everything built out. And we're waiting on, on, on the base paving to come in and, and paving machine was ready to go as I was leaving a little before four. So they, that's, that was today, segment one, which is Spore Line Drive from Maine to high. That'll be Tuesday. They're going to mill and base pave that. And then same day tomorrow, do the final surface on, on mill drive, which is segment seven. Wednesday, they'll go over to segment one again and finish the surface paving there. And then move up to sex, segment three, which is the upper end Spore Line Drive from Rook to Maine. They'll do a mill and base on that. And then Thursday they'll come in and do the final paving, final paving on segment three. Friday, they're leaving as, for a walkthrough and cleanup and then a backup day for weather, which looks good this week. Temperatures are good, rain isn't in the forecast. And then if they also run into any stone base issues where they need to replace that, that's going to take more time. The base paving, when mill was uncovered was all good. So again, we're, we're in, we're into positive, positive there and keeps things more, more on schedule. So we'll see how tomorrow goes with, when they mill, when they mill up the lower end of Spore Line Drive. So they, they, I took some videos, I sent one to Neil, I took a couple of other ones. So um, they, they, I took some videos, I sent one to, to Neil, I took a couple other ones if. If anybody would like to see them, I'll try to get them onto my computer. And, and email them to you. It's pretty interesting operation. If you get a chance to see it, it's, it's pretty neat to see. Um, they really have a good team that they have about ten or twelve guys, uh not counting the guys driving the trucks. Um, work together very closely, so it's, it's, it's going, going well so far. So that's, um, well, the original plan was for CPE to be back in town. Um, Monday, October twenty sixth, do back to back weeks and get us finished up. But uh we got bumped by the White House. Um, they work, they do work for Homeland Security. And they were notified that they have to be on the White House campus the week of um October twenty sixth. And so the plan is be down there for four days, I believe they said, and, and then be back in New Windsor. Uh, Monday, uh November second and finish, finish up the rest of the road, so. That's uh, if you're gonna get bumped, I guess getting bumped by that White House is about as high as it goes. So that's.
You tell them I was down at the White House for a tour Saturday, and I didn't see anything a- as bad as our roads.
Well, they, I'm sure they have a little different standard than we. So, anyway.
Thanks for keeping up on that.
Yep, yep, so far, so good.
Good. Sulfur Springs Park Master Plan Update.
Okay, bear with me one second, I'm juggling some papers here. So now that GMB has begun working on the preliminary engineering report uh for the possible E and R upgrade of our. Wastewater Treatment Plant, they've asked, asked for an update on uh the Sulfur Springs Park Plan. Uh, and this is needed so that when GMB moves forward, they can, uh, they can do design the. Possible layouts so for the various structures and tanks as they're doing the layouts for the different options as part of the. As part of the uh PER study, so they just asked if, where we were with that and, and I said I'd, I'd bring it up at our next meeting, so.
And I, I talked to Gary about this a little bit this last week. And actually, I don't know whether it's great minds working together or what, but uh. Um, I had reached out again to the Cal Ripken Senior Foundation. Who I've been working with for several years and told him that we finally had the lagoon filled in. And um compacted to where you're gonna build a, a state highway on, so they were real pleased with that. Um, a lot of their fundraising this year has been uh a lot less because of they can't have the. Events that they've had in the past, so uh funding isn't um where it um usually is. However, they're still interested in helping us out. With a, a final layout, if we would choose to go that way. Um, I'm looking at possibly one or two more investors. Um, for naming rights of the park. And um, you know, I'll be talking to them uh probably the first weekend, November. So whether I have an update for the November uh date um or not, or. Uh, town council meeting, I'm not sure, but it'll be shortly thereafter. Um, and um, but I told Gary that GMB, in my opinion. Really needs to put the priority on the design of the structures and the layout. Rather than the park. I'd rather we work the park around um. The wastewater treatment plant than vice versa. Um, make sure that we get hopefully the most economical. Uh, layout possible rather than we say, hey, this is where we want the park, you're gonna have to put the tank somewhere else. So I think that the, the design of the wastewater treatment plant needs to come first before the. Uh, final design of the park. That's my, my input on that.
And I'll, Neil, I'll add one thing there, uh, along those lines. Um. And, and the preliminary talks and uh with, with GMB. Um, the likely, the likely area to expand the footprint of the wastewater plant is. Um, uphill or to higher ground, if that makes sense, because of. Um, basically where our, our, our flows come in at the, at, to the. Plant now is kind of at the lower end of things, so that will continue. And then basically any kind of. Realignment and, and, and reconfiguration of the, the plant operations, you're gonna wanna keep it. Up, up, on higher ground. You wanna pump it one time, get it up and then kind of work its way through, through the system. So the likely direction of expansion, uh at least preliminarily is, is up towards. Uh, up, up towards the, the, the one. In the ten- in the tennis courts area versus out into the new fill area. Not saying that it wouldn't expand that way some. But I think the general direction would be to higher ground.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Any other opinions? Alright. Coronavirus Relief Fund additional funding.
Okay, um, so we got some good news. Um, we've, uh, a- actually Neil received an email. And forwarded it to me on October sixth from Debbie Standford. She's the grants manager. For Carroll County and basically she was asking if New Windsor had additional needs. A- as part of COVID nineteen and, and the coronavirus relief fund. The um criteria for additional funding is the same as it was when we applied earlier on in the year. Uh, and an application worksheet had, had to be submitted by October fourteenth. Uh, so you may recall, there was, there was a lot of funding with the Corona. Virus Aid Relief and Economy Economic Security Act, or what they call the CARES Act. And the town received uh forty nine hundred and fifty dollars of funding back in early June as requested. So on October fourteenth, I submitted a uh worksheet for an additional sixteen thousand two hundred and forty dollars of funding. And the worksheet uh for that funding included three line items. Um, two of which were additional request of funding that we had done um with the first part, just now that we've gotten some. Some estimates and better, better cost of what things are, um, I'm increasing, I'm requesting more money for two of the uh line items. That we already did. And then the third is a new request, and that would be for the purchase and installation. Of interior cameras, microphones and related equipment. To be able to record and broadcast um town council work session and planning commissions from the, the, our me- new meeting hall. Um, so we'll be notified in a couple of weeks and I'll provide you an update once we know. Um, we will have to act fast, wh- if we do get the funding, because all that has to be. All funding and money has to be spent by the end of the calendar year. Um. So I did check with the, the vendors that we're working with um in these, these uh, uh funding uh items. As to whether the equipment could be ordered, received and installed by the end of the year. And the vendors all confirmed that this can happen, so they're, they're not experiencing. Uh, uh significant backlogs, uh which is common, other things. Uh, wi- with the stuff that they're ordering, so they, they feel very confident that we can make that happen. So just wanted to give you guys an update on that.
And thank you for staying up on that. Um, and one of the things I just thought about, it was actually like Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday. Uh, I guess Monday, last Monday was a holiday, so Tuesday when I approached Gary and it was pretty much um. Last minute, um, but uh I just gotten information from uh town of Manchester, I guess on Friday. That they had applied for um a touchless bathroom upgrade at their park. And that's the, you know, uh sinks where you just put your hand under, everything's motion detector, the. The soap dispenser, the dryer, and even bath, uh, uh toilet can be. Um, for our park over in the Lions Club Park. Um, so if there's additional funding, um, that will be another project that we, we can look at. So if you think of anything else, um, that's COVID related, that would help. Um, you know, for safety for our employees and our residents, uh keep it in mind and let Gary or myself know. Any questions on that? Thank you, Gary.
You're welcome.
Um. Possible new water and sewer hookup fees distribution to lower water and sewer base rates. Um, I had mentioned at the town council meeting in October that I was working with uh. Um, Towson University Applied Mathematics Lab- Laboratory to take a look at. All of our revenues, our projected revenues, our capital projects, our base rates, our usage rates. And the, to determine um. Basically give us more assurance um fo- going forward. Um, I got a response back today. They have three students, they would like to get two more, but they're meeting Thursday. And they'll be asking, uh, sending me uh for more information, so I'll be working with Gary on that. Um, so um, that way we can have a retreat. We'll have to see what the, what there's a, if there's gonna be a charge, what that charge will be. The last time I worked with them on another project, there was no uh fee, so I'm hoping for the same out, out, uh, same uh. Response on that, but I'll, I'll find out probably later this week after they meet on Thursday. So that will take a look at our, our rates again, even though we've just had our rate structure. Um, studied, what, two years ago, Gary?
Uh, it's a li- a little bit longer than that.
Three years.
Yeah, probably about three years before.
Three years ago, and the only thing that was off, I think, was a base rate of what, five dollars?
Yeah, it was, everything was pretty well in line from.
Yeah, so if anybody has any other comments, but I am working very closely with uh Towson. University Applied Mathematics Laboratory and uh, uh hopefully we'll get some uh more definite news from them in the next week or two.
So I have a few comments. So what spurred me to have this conversation was if you guys remember. Back when COVID first hit, I was very adamant that we had to do better as far as residents and businesses within the community. And we had at, kept saying that we, as the town, would work with residents and businesses as needed, as they were requested. What really made me think about this was, um. I would say in the last week, probably between social media and other private messages, about a hus- a hundred residents. Had expressed concern about us automatically raising rates in the middle of a pandemic. And I completely understand that the study was done three years ago, but I guarantee you that study, like everybody else, didn't forecast a global pandemic. And we have to do better, because what's gonna happen within the next few years? We have to take into consideration about people that businesses are only operating as of now seventy five percent. For the last six months, it was carry out only how much revenue they lost during the course of that. And we still are going with this study. I understand it, I respect it, I, I understand the projects that we have. Um, but. This study could not predict a global pandemic that affects our businesses, it affects our residents, it affects everybody within our nation, so. I think what we really need to take a look at, and I'm prepared to make a motion tonight, as long as the state's in a state emergency for COVID nineteen. That we will, this, the town cannot raise any more water sewer rates until it's over. And I'd like to put that motion on the floor, um, if anybody would like to second it, because we have this. I'm more concerned about what's gonna happen in the next few years coming out of this pandemic. Than I am, you know, with the study as currently. So my motion is the town cannot raise any water sewer base fees or rates. Until the state comes out of COVID nineteen state of emergency.
I'll second that motion.
So Councilman Green, I guess, the way I understand this would work is that, that. As long as we were in the same position uh by July one of next year. That that would preclude us from raising rates at that time. You wouldn't suggest that we back up the increase that was just imposed.
No, I, I think um at this point, we leave what is done. And we, moving forward, if we're in the same position July one, we do not raise. Any increases until we come out of the state of emergency.
Okay, I guess my comment on that is I, I would. Suggest that that would be something that we could address. Uh, towards the end of this fiscal year or in budget building time. Uh, for next year. I'm not sure it warrants making a motion such as that at this time. We should be closer to knowing how much longer this is gonna go at that time. Uh, I would certainly be open to it at that time, but I'm not sure it necessa- it's necessary to make a motion or to. To take action on that at this time.
I agree with you. I mean, a lot can happen in six to eight months. When Gary's working on the budget, we can discuss it then in the budget process. I think it's a little premature right now.
And I respect everybody's opinion, but I'm not gonna descend, I'm not gonna recuse my motion. I'm, I'm gonna go forward with it and I have a.
Councilman Sho- Councilman Schultz or Councilman Huffman, any comments?
Well, I don't, I'm not, I mean, I understand, and Councilman Green, I understand we're in a pandemic and. It certainly has affected everybody, but I, I guess I feel like to make a decision like that, I have to see. Um. You know, I have to, like, if, you know, one of the things we talked about the last time we brought this up was how, if people started having a lot of trouble paying their water bill. Then we would have to think about that. I, I think Doc, Don, I, Clark Albin, you still there, right? And I don't think we've seen any kind of an uptick in that. Um, I, I just feel like, you know, what we just, what was it, two months ago, we just look, revisited our, our um projects, which, which. You know, number into the millions and. You know, I mean, if we start, like, like everyone, um. We've talked about, if we started seeing a problem, I would certainly support that, but just because we're in a pandemic. And I don't, I don't know that I see how that's. Impacting so many people that they can't pay their bill right now. Now, if a month from now, that was different, or two months from now, that was different, or six months from now. I mean, then I would certainly support taking a look at. You know, putting that freeze on, but I, I'm, I don't, I don't, I mean, unless you have some more information other than. People, I understand people being concerned, but I'm not actually seeing. Like, we're not seeing people can't pay their bill. And, you know, maybe New Windsor's been fortunate, maybe most of our residents were able to keep their jobs. I don't, I don't know, but. I mean, I certainly would support it if we saw that it was having that on the, you know, right on the. backs of our citizens' impact, but I, I don't see that yet. So I don't know how we, it's actually, to me, that's not responsible, just personally. To start taking money that we need. I mean, we, we've got these major expensive projects coming up, so, you know.
So, so when, can I ask, when, when's the next increase supposed to go in?
July first every year.
So it's, it's at July, right? So I, I, I think. I, I mean, I, I, I certainly am not withdrawing my second to the motion. Um, I, I think that. To, to put that out there, we certainly, it, it works in reverse is what I'm saying. I- if, if we, if we move on it now. And everything clears up, uh, I, I don't think anybody anticipates that that's gonna happen anytime soon, but everything clears up. We could certainly then revisit the idea of not raising rates. What it does do is it does send a message out to the people that. We are um aware of it and we are um, we are willing to. Take that into consideration. It's like a good faith. Yeah, I think it sends the right message. Um, if, if we get closer to July and things are better, then we can always go back to that rate. Um, because I think the motion is quite clear that this is simply during the state of emergency. If the state of emergency is out in July. And it's no longer in effect, this motion, this motion dies at that point. It, it's simply a motion that if it is in a state of emergency. In July, we would not raise the rates at that point. So, um, you know, un- unless Councilman Green withdraws a motion, my second stands as well.
Um, thank you both. I, I think we have an obligation um to support our infrastructure. And support the town through providing water. I don't know that making a decision now um. Based upon activities is, is wise when we can make that decision in six. Eight months from now with factual data at that time. I think it's more important that we. Supply the town with water and keep that in, in place and make decisions. About future rates at the time that we need to do that. Um, the, the good faith thing, I, you, you know, I, I hear you, Ed, um, and maybe some people would take it like that. Um, me, me personally, I wanna see the numbers, I wanna see um. The position that the town is in, in eight months to make that decision.
Councilman Green, you wanna make your motion one more time?
Yes, I put a motion on the floor. The town during state of emergency for COVID nineteen. Will not raise any base fees or any rates. Fees or any rates related to water and sewer until the state of emergency is lifted for COVID nineteen.
Then we have a second by Councilman Smith. All those in favor, signify by raise your hand. Those opposed, raise your hand. Motion is denied. Three to two. Thank you. Anybody have anything else?
Neil, I, I have just a quick note, um, that uh. Uh, Mid-Atlantic Utilities and Fox Tapping installed uh, three insert, in- insertion valves. Uh, last week ahead of the scheduled water main shutdown. Uh, and repair, which is scheduled for this Wednesday, uh, the twenty first. That's at the, the leak at the intersection. Uh, basically intersectional main and high there at the corner park. So everything's in place uh, for that, for that shutdown. Uh, Wayne and Public Works guys have uh, uh, put out uh, flyers and, and um. And, and notified the public. It'll be on the, it'll be on our website. I have Kalina post something again tomorrow. I believe it's something on there now. If not, I'll, I'll follow up with her, but just a, just a reminder of that that's coming. And that the uh, uh, preliminary work has been done and, and ready to go for that water line shutdown repair.
Very good. What's the latest on the fence on college?
Uh, new change. The, the, the last information I've got from, from Frederick Fence was that the materials are due in the end of this month. And they're scheduled to uh, uh, be in, in town to do the, the fence install of the first. For first or second week in November. I don't have a so- I don't have a solid date on that or any change to that information when. Uh, I got, I'm thinking towards the end of next week, middle of the end of next week, I'm gonna reach back out to them and. And, and follow up and see what the schedule is there.
And appreciate you co- contacting the residents there that are affected. Keep them updated.
Yeah, I've been, I wa- sent out another letter when I got the latest, um, um, uh. Time change and, and schedule change on that. So again, I, 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 I feel for the residents here. I apologize. For it's, it's comes, it's, it's a material supply situation that's really not anybody's, uh, you know, under. Anybody can really do anything about at this time, but like I said, I will follow up with them. Uh, probably in the middle, middle of the week and that's when things are supposed, the materials are supposed to be delivered. And then check the schedule and, and follow up. Um, I should know something by the next uh, council meeting, for sure.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anybody have anything else? If not, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Smith, seconded by the Councilman Huffman to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, signify by raise your hand. Five hands, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Stay safe.
Halloween, stay safe.
See you later.